We didn't go about over this earlier because we are running a few minutes late. So if it's okay with the council, I'd like to switch items B and A under new business. So we have the capital improvements plan presented to us since Mr. McCrory is here, and it is 7:35, and that would bring us up on schedule. Is that okay with the council? I didn't get a -- okay, good, all right.
See if this thing works.
And you've got the presentation?
What I'll be doing is walking through the CIP with you folks. I need to talk to Ryan for a little bit.
Jim Halbert look-alike.
I am going to just -- could you just call me Jim Halbert?
I did.
Say thank you, sir. This is going to be starting up, so while it's starting up, I hope it starts up. Because what I wanted to do -- So while Ryan's using his technical savvy on this, so the capital improvement program, and this is something that some of you probably haven't been working with before. It is a -- something that's prepared by the planning board. So I, as the staff representative to the planning board from the planning development office, work through the process and help work with the steering committee that the planning board assigns to this process. This year, the steering committee, a couple of planning board members, the chair, Mayor Lovett were on there, Mary Walter, Mr. Ryan, Mr. McNutt, Ryan McNutt, were all on the steering committee, participating in developing the CIP. And so then it was presented to the planning board, and the planning board adopted on March 26th. The document that you folks received had provisional stamped on it because we were trying to get it to the March 28th meeting, which we then thankfully got bumped from because it sounded like it was a late night. But this is for your benefit to walk through this. The waters might be a little washed out on the screen, but I think that the colors will be washed out on the screen here, but I believe on the screens at home, it'll be a little bit more vivid and you'll be able to see things. The real impetus of the CIP is through state law, and the CIP is, in effect, a planning document. It's something that, and I'll read from the cover page of the report. "Its sole purpose and effect of the CIP shall be to aid the mayor or selectmen and the budget committee in their consideration of the annual budget." So when we're looking at the CIP, and this is the first page being the one-page report, I'm trying to keep this short and sweet for you folks. It does, as one person once explained it to me, it is the master plan in practice. It is taking whatever master planning document the city may have and implements it in the current needs for the city's capital improvements. There are various different capital improvements that might be addressed in a CIP. Over the years, it has included vehicle fleets, it has included photocopiers, but this year we did winnow it down a little bit to those more substantial capital improvements. So being infrastructure projects, being building projects, renovation projects, and we can look in that a little bit more. The interesting thing that we've tried to implement over the last couple of years is a standardized evaluation process. Up to a couple of years ago, last year, in fact, for the CIP process, Mary Walter had introduced an evaluation matrix that we then adopted over for the city to use. We had eight criteria. This year, we winnowed it down to five criteria, and I think that really helps in the process. It was started off as some sort of, well, kind of qualitative assessment, what do we think? When we've put it down to the five criteria, which I'll go through shortly, it, in my estimation, it provides some standard, some equity among the different projects, so that not only can we feel in the steering committee level that we're conducting a fair and reasonable evaluation, but also, as we move forward, the department heads who submit the projects know what to anticipate in the evaluation, so that they know how their projects will be evaluated. When we talk about how this works in the implementation stages, again, this is a guidance document. This is not something that's expected to go straight into the city budget. But what we do find is that it helps us recognize those projects that need to be done. If it's not a high-priority immediate project, it's something that might be required in the next five years, six years. It can be up to 10 years. We choose a six-year timeframe. And that helps us keep in mind at the administrative level, okay, and at the planning board level, these things are coming up, and these things need to keep, we need to keep an eye out for grants. We need to keep an eye out for how we're going to pay for it in the future, or maybe if there's some opportunity for other grants or loans, low-interest loans, that we can then jump on those when the opportunity rises. Also, what we find is that with the CIP, there might be a smaller project that's on the list for a certain department, and at the end of the fiscal year, the department may have some extra fund balance available. And this helps everybody recognize, oh, wait, we can do this now because we have an extra fund balance, and we can cover that cost and take it off the CIP. So it gives us a little bit of a reference as well. When we get into the evaluation stage, so the second page of this report was a rundown of the evaluation criteria, and we had five criteria. Four of them were exercised at the steering committee level. They're up here on the board, the department priority, whether it's contractually or legally obligated, whether there are health and safety improvements as a result of the project, and whether those improvements maintain community services. The way these criteria were weighted in terms of their scores, each of them had a score of one to three, we really did try to promote those projects that are exceptional get the higher score. So those projects that improve health and safety, or substantially improve community services, get that higher score. But we also want to be cognizant of how it earns a bang for the buck, so to speak. So that's where some later evaluation processes come in, and that might be more of a qualitative assessment at the city council level. So if I move on, and again, this is where the colors wash out for us here at the city council chambers. Those five criteria, and I'll just step to criteria five, the consistency with the master plan vision and goals, that is something that is left to the planning board. The planning board, once the steering committee gets done with their process, it's then presented to the planning board, and there is a work-through process to make that happen. This year, with the new master plan that was adopted in January, one of the major chapters in that is aggregating all the goals and objectives from all the different chapters into the implementation chapter. That made this last step a little bit easier because we had that information all put together already, and I think over the next few years, that will continue to be an asset that we can benefit from in the CIP development process. The reason why I color-code these is because when we step over to the next piece of the report, which is the evaluation matrix, I'm trying to make this clear and transparent how each item on the CIP was evaluated. We have some correlation. Criterion one is, you know, that one through five are numbered in that CIP evaluation matrix there. So I'll catch myself up here. So again, those criteria that are explained on the second page of the report are then carried through into this evaluation matrix. And we did, this was a group consensus effort at the steering committee level. Each of those criteria were given a value, and then criteria five were given a value at the planning board level, and the planning board had final approval of the evaluation criteria. But what does that do? So that takes each of the projects that are in that matrix. You go across the board, and you look at what the project is, what the scope is. The planning board is not as concerned with the project cost. They're more looking at the description benefits and intent of the project. But I have to say, the project cost does have an effect on the process, you know. So we leave it in there on purpose. But at the end of the day, in the evaluation, you do have a total score for each project. Maximum score was 15. I'm thinking there were some projects that are in the CIP. You would see that they actually have the label of being deferred. I call that a zero. That's basically a project where the department head did say, well, I can put those off for some time. We don't need to have those in the CIP. Since they're already integrated into the matrix, we just said deferred. So generally, down to about a value of five or six for some of the lower-scoring projects. That has a bearing. So when we take it to the next stage of the CIP, which is then looking how these projects are implemented over the next six years, these scores have a bearing on that. So this is the CIP. It's printed 11 by 17. I don't expect anybody to be able to read this. This is just for your reference right now. It has each of those projects listed, it has the project scores, but then there are other columns that do have relevance to this process. Again, the project summary and the project scores from that prior sheet. The project cost offsets, when we look at that, this was something where, after all the evaluations were done, I worked with department heads, I worked with Mary, I worked with Ryan, to figure out what kind of balances there might be available to offset the bottom-line costs to the city for each project. There are some cases where there are grants available, there are some cases where there's a capital reserve fund available, and then any savings that have been allocated to a project in the past. And that, those three columns summarize that, so that we have it on paper, and then we also can see where might we have an opportunity to find other grants or find more grant funds. I think, in my mind, when I'm working on these, I'm chasing the grants personally. So that then translates to what the city's liability in the next two columns, which is entitled "The Project Fund Balance." When you have the total project cost, and you deduct all those prior project cost offsets, you have the final balance. What would the city be liable for if we did the project today? And that's where we identify, you know, with subtraction, figure out what that final balance is, but then we also figure out, is there an opportunity, and what kind of local fund source is that, is going to be available? A lot of times, we defer to the, you know, the ever ominous property tax as a funding source. There are sometimes other funding sources that we can identify. So it's not strictly that. I think we try to keep that open, and we certainly welcome inputs as to other funding sources, particularly for certain projects. As we move on, so that's what the project would cost the city, less all of those project offsets. And then that project cost combined with the evaluation scores, and I'm going to use a little pointer here for you folks in the building, so you remember these evaluation scores, 15 down to five, more or less. We then, what I did was I integrated a little bit of an algorithm to then attenuate those project costs over the next six years. So that's what the CIP itself is. It's these, these project costs attenuated over the years based on their priorities. So fiscal year 19 would be the highest priority projects. Fiscal year 20 would be the next level, fiscal year 21, 2, 3, 4. So it moves on down the line based on a little algorithm that I used to make that happen. Some of the cases, there is a, actually, I'll go to the next one that sort of gives an example. There's a project here that is high priority, and it's slated as a recommendation to be part of the fiscal year 19 budget. Again, it's a planning document. It's a recommendation based on how to evaluate, how it scored in the overall process. That whole sum is taken up in fiscal year 19. Then there's a second-tier project that would be fiscal year 20. You'll notice that there's some funds that would be allocated in 19, and then in 20. So it helps the, helps everybody involved in the CIP process look at how these costs can be attenuated over time, so we're not stuck with a substantial cost at one time. And on it goes, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. The intent is, at the very end, at the bottom line, to try to manage the overall project costs to the city year to year to be about level. So I'm ballparking here. I can't read that. I don't expect you to read it. But, you know, if we had a bucket of gold that we could use each year, the CIP would say it's around $6.7 million each year to do, to fund different projects moving down the line. It does drop off a little, oops, I just, okay. It did drop off at the very end, at the tail end. The projects didn't quite attenuate out, and I messed with the logic of the algorithm, but it tends to tail off towards the end. That's when, you know, either projects get all deferred to the end of the cycle, and the values just jump too high, or we have a generally consistent bottom line through the first four years, and then they tail off to the last couple. So that's sort of the tour through the CIP. And as I said, the planning board approved and adopted this, recommended it with the cover letter that I provided to the city council, signed by the chair of the planning board. The document, I'm quite satisfied. I've done CIPs for other communities at other times, and I personally like this process. I like how this process worked out. I like how the steering committee worked on it. I like how all the department heads were involved in the process and gave feedback, and were engaged in any questions that we asked for certain projects and certain issues. I can see this progressing as an improving process over time, that year to year, we'll see a better opportunity for that long-term fiscal planning. One thing I do, well, I'll leave it at that for any questions you might have on the CIP. And I can turn the lights on. If somebody wants to refer to these slides, I'll leave the lights off.
Any questions from the council? So Mayor Dammel?
Yeah, just one, and I don't know if it's one that you could answer this evening or not, or whether you're the most appropriate person. Under the police department, I was a bit surprised. I didn't see anything in there for body cams or dashboard cams, and certainly, we've all got a heightened awareness of those things today. I'm just curious why we didn't see that pop up.
I actually, and Ryan, you might be able to speak to this a little more completely. I think there was a discussion of that kind of technology, and I think it's better to come from Chief Chase on the specifics why, but I don't know if the police department is ready for that technology yet.
Yeah, I know it's something that Chief Chase is looking into. I think he's getting information to propose it being added to the CIP. I think he's just still in the evaluative stage.
Okay. Do we have any dashboard cams in any of the police cars now, or is it simply we have nothing?
I would elect to ask and get back to you with an answer.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Councilor Pope?
So how much reference was made back to the previous capital improvement plan?
There was some, actually. Many of the projects that were, that are in this CIP were back from the last year's CIP.
13 through 18, yeah.
And, yeah, so the interesting thing about that is, we did find that a lot of the departments opted to push the last year's CIP forward, and then we asked questions on those projects. And that's where the discussion started. During the steering committee evaluation process, we did look at how projects were evaluated. There was a challenge with the old CIP project summary reports that the departments would submit. So we're, at the staff level, we're revising those reports to more closely match this process. So next year will be different.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mike. This is a good presentation.
Thank you.
One of the other, I think, helpful things from the CIP process, and again, most of our neighboring communities conduct their own capital improvement planning process, is it helps when I meet with other managers to talk about, you know, efficiencies that have been created, reviewing our CIP list. Sometimes, some of the items become stale, and there's been changes in technology, or there's been changes in practices, or there are opportunities recognized to be able to share resources. So I have been meeting with neighboring managers from neighboring communities. We have been reviewing our CIP plans together, and we have been looking at items that are big, big capital items, very, very high-dollar-ticket items, and looking at, is there the potential that we could share these services, regionalize these services, and reduce the cost items over time? So that's another benefit of the CIP, is it allows us to see, you know, some big expenditures that we may not actually have to do ourselves, or solely by ourselves.
And it'd also be good to get some feedback from you if we're missing something in ours that might be listed in others.
It's true, right, right. We also may be informed by somebody else's CIP. Yeah.
I had one question with regard to, as a follow-up to Councilor Pope's, and that is, if memory serves, didn't we complete several CIP projects from the last CIP plan?
There were a few. What I can think of off the top of my head is there are some renovations at the police department, where the chief is able to apply fund balance for various projects there. Specifically, I cannot enumerate all of them.
No. I'm not asking for that. But if we've completed things, I think it's important to kind of highlight that to the public, because this is, CIP projects are huge investments from the public, and I think it's nice for the public to see what they've accomplished through their support of the CIP, of these CIP projects, with their tax dollars. So if we could get a summary that would highlight that, that would be great.
Would you like that as a future CIP item, or would you like to have that for short term, in the next few weeks?
Both, both. To cover what has been completed, and then at least a discussion at the planning board level about including that in the CIP presentation next time.
Okay.
Councilor Kowalski?
Past years, I was very critical on how the CIP came forward. I'm happier that this process involved the master plan steering committee. And I also would like to see items that didn't carry forward in this CIP from past years. And there are some that were completed, and there were some that I think were removed because we may not have the need at this point. But it would have been nice to see that. I like this. But one sticks out, that money was used instead to repair the storage barn at the fire station instead of building a new structure. So that's not in here anymore. And then replacement of engine two at the fire department has always been in this, and that's not in here. But it's nice to know reasoning why, or oops, something fell through the cracks, but...
I could speak to that. We did talk about vehicle fleet considerations in the CIP process, and because there are so many recurring expenses, and how those fleet expenses are enumerated, we decided to stick to what I'd call more brick-and-mortar projects. But there was discussion on how to address vehicle fleets in the CIP. Honestly, I'm still going to have to figure that out. There are other capital projects and programs that other, that departments do internally as well, that might be valuable to understand as, in the context of this entire process. But the funding sources are internal to those departments, and we'll think it through. But I understand what you're saying. There are some things that were taken off, simply because, you know, I think the dozen or so vehicles that the DPW had on last year's CIP, we took those off because we wanted to more focus on the road projects and culverts and things that are, they're more, I guess, more directly a public benefit, though fleet improvement for all departments is an important public benefit. We recognize that.
And just to follow up to that, that's kind of what I'm saying, is I don't, I don't want to get into, I know we have a plan, but it'd be nice to know what that plan is if something was removed as far as vehicles, because I also remember when I was a kid where we had DPW equipment that wasn't being replaced, and everything was, ran with bungee cords. So for the sense of removing those, I know there's a plan, but I'd like to know that, if it's not in here.
Okay.
Councilor Zula?
Some of the fire department, the bucket truck is listed on this.
Yes. That was one of those items that, it, that was one of those immediate need items that the chief of the fire department asked to have that on the CIP. He felt there was substantial need for that, as part of the CIP rather than the other sort of longer-term vehicle cycling.
Any other questions from Mr. McCrory? Yes, Councilor Stone?
Question. I'm looking at the police department's one. We have a locker room renovation of $90,000, and we have an officer room renovation of $10,000. And I'm just wondering, you know, looking at what's, are we replacing the entire structure of the locker rooms for female and male officers, or are we looking at doing something totally different than what's there in place now?
My recollection is that it is a substantial upgrade to the existing facilities, in the existing footprint. In fact, those were, those are projects that the chief has put on to, immediate implementation. I haven't tracked it, but I know that he's been preparing RFPs. He asked for our department's assistance in developing RFPs for that work. So the scope of work, you could probably check with the police department to see exactly what it is.
Okay.
Those two projects will happen in FY '19.
Councilor Pope?
My question comes as to how you're getting some of the prices on this. For example, one that's come to my attention, fortunately or unfortunately, is ADA accessibility improvements for the entrances of, say, City Hall. improvements for the entrances of, say, City Hall, listed in at 160. Where are those prices coming from?
Those, some of those are ballpark estimates. We are, I believe we are still awaiting an architect's report, okay, that, on the details of specifically City Hall. If you bring up City Hall, there is a detailed architect's report pending for it, and we'll be able to update the numbers once we have that report. The numbers that you see for the interior improvements, any ADA accessibility bathroom facilities in City Hall, those are all estimates that had been carried over from prior CIP years. So, they're a ballpark estimate. The ones that are for the exterior improvements, the roof, the masonry, exterior entries, those are more up-to-date. That was provided beginning of this year by the same architect.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. McCrory, thank you for the presentation, and we'll look forward to getting those responses to the questions that the council has asked, and we hope to be able to fold some of this into the budget discussion and make some progress with some of these projects.
Certainly. And just in terms of process, I know that I was asked to prepare a motion, okay. I didn't know if I was going to...
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Motion to accept capital improvement program 2019-2024. Whereas the Claremont Planning Board pursuant to RSA 674:7 has prepared and approved the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2024, and now desires to submit its recommendations to the mayor and city council for consideration as part of the council's annual budget review process. The Claremont City Council hereby accepts the fiscal year 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Program as approved on March 26, 2018 by the Claremont Planning Board. The Claremont City Council hereby authorizes the city manager, or is designees to incorporate the recommendations contained in the fiscal year 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Program into the annual budget review process, and authorizes the Claremont Planning Board to provide updates to the capital improvement program on an annual basis to maintain and improve the city's credit rating and fiscal health.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Kowalski, seconded by Assistant Mayor Dameron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. McCrory.
Thank you.